Good afternoon and welcome to the June 29, 2010 meeting of the Glendale City Council. I apologize for our late start this evening. We have been in meetings pretty much nonstop since 1:00 and only now were we afforded a short 10-minute break before starting this meeting. Very good. Roll call, please.
Let's turn over to G.R.A. first.
Before we take roll call, I'd like to pause the city council meeting and turn it over to redevelopment chair Friedman.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the redevelopment closed session?
You don't want to continue this?
We don't want to continue it forever.
Who is talking about it? Okay, second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Okay, back to city council. Roll call, please.
Council members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Council member Friedman, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I invite you to place your hand over your heart and join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered this evening by Reverend Skip Lindman of the Locken Yada Congregational Church.
Let us pray. "We thank you, O God, for the privilege of living in this wonderful country, not only on the Fourth of July but every day of the year. We also thank you for the privilege of being chosen to be leaders of the people. Help us to deliberate with honesty and fairness for the good of all concerned. Help us to be your good and faithful servants in all that we do." Amen.
Amen.
Can we have your report, please?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda for the June 29, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, June 24, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thanks. The next item.
Next item is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of July 6, 2010.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have one business agenda item, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding veterans' housing programs. That's in the afternoon. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have no business agenda items. At 6:00 p.m. for the Glendale City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items, Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2009-10 Slurry Seal Program and Piedmont Avenue and Lauderdale Avenue Improvement Project. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding portable pump installation project. City Manager regarding the Los Angeles County Energy Program, A.B. 11. Under adoption of ordinances, we have ordinance amending the zoning map to reflect new zoning designations. Under action items, we have two items, Director of Community Planning, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding appropriation of grant funds for preparation of a greener Glendale sustainability plan. Director of Human Resources, this is memorandum of understanding between the city and the Glendale Firefighters Association. Under hearings, we have one item, Director of Community Planning, this is an appeal of conditional use permit and mitigated negative declaration located at 1650 Hasbeth Lane. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And the next item, please.
Next item, the city council and staff comments.
Okay. I have a comment that I'd like to read off of. As I get this. Off the press. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to announce that the city of Glendale and the Glendale Firefighters Association today announced an unprecedented memorandum of understanding that renegotiates a new four-year salary and benefit agreement. As many municipalities nationwide struggle to balance their budgets, the willingness of the GFFA to work closely with the city during this fiscal crisis illustrates the commitment that this organization has to the community it serves. The estimated cost savings to Glendale over the next four years will be well over $2 to $3 million. More importantly, the agreement means we will be able to continue our current level of outstanding services to our city without experiencing station closures, furloughs, or brownouts that have impacted some of our neighboring communities. The key components of this agreement include the delay of negotiated cost of living increase for the second year and for the two following years. There will be no cost of living increase for the GFFA until 2013. A cost sharing of the employer's portion of the PERS pension plan. Glendale is already one of the few cities where employees contribute to their retirement pension plan. This agreement will raise the firefighter's contribution to the employer's share from 1.5% to 2%. The agreement also establishes a two-tier retirement plan. Effective January 1, 2011, all newly hired firefighters will be eligible for retirement at age 55 rather than the current 50 years. This will lead to long-term sustainability in the pension system, and Glendale is the only city of which I'm aware that has taken this step. Again, the men and women of the Glendale Firefighters Association are to be commended for their spirit of cooperation in addressing the serious financial challenges that the city of Glendale is facing. I think a round of applause is due. This item will come to council next week where there can be a more in-depth discussion and an agendized item. Unfortunately, I will not be in council next week. I will be traveling out of the country, and you will be in the -- the city will be in the steady hands of councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Dave Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, I want to join you on behalf of the residents of Glendale thanking the Glendale firefighters. This is the second time, the second year of a contract that they willingly and voluntarily pulled back on increases in benefits and pay. So I think anytime you see a firefighter in the city of Glendale, be sure you thank them because they did have a contract, yet they know the kind of situation the city of Glendale is in, and they chose to go and in essence give up pay and benefits. So they're to be congratulated.
Mr. Raymond.
Thank you for reminding me about that. I think the -- one of the most important things about the mayor's announcement and council member Quintero's comments is the fact that we need to remember this was an existing contract. This was not a newly negotiated contract. So these were things that the Firefighters Association did not have to give up. They did not have to forego. They chose to do this, and now, as was pointed out, for the second time in a row, for the main reason that -- well, two main reasons. They understand the situation that Glendale's municipal government is in vis-à-vis the economy and its residents as well, and secondarily so as not to have to compromise anything in the way of public safety while they're doing this. They are to be commended, and I just wanted to share my voice on that. I know there are others who want to speak. I have a couple of items unrelated to this. If I may, come back to them later.
Sure. Well, if there's anyone else who'd like to address this.
No, I'll say I'm so very proud of our firefighters. I'll have more to say next week, and I hope there'll be a number of firefighters here so we can personally thank them.
Just to add that this contract, this new contract, is really groundbreaking. I don't know of any other city in the state where the firefighters or any employee organization has come in, and they haven't just frozen their salary. I want to make this clear. They're actually giving back. They're going to be taking money out of their pocket in essence and handing it back to the city, and it's something, again, that they didn't have to do. These are men and women who were truly heroes with the station fire and put their life on the line all the time, and to take this extra step, I think, is really extraordinary. I think this is something that we're going to be hearing about, not just in the local newspaper, but, you know, on the state scene, because it really is quite an aggressive act and
Unprecedented.
Unprecedented. Thank you. That's a much better word than aggressive. And then I also had a few other unrelated things, so I'll wait until after. Mr. Raymond.
Hey, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you. Two items, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with this as a segue. They're both public events, both in the far north Glendale, as the Weismanns have -- a term the Weismanns have coined. One is the Fourth of July, the annual Fourth of July fireworks show at Locrisina Elementary School. This is a fantastic program. It serves several purposes. For one thing, it's a wonderful entertainment for the city of Glendale, and it's shared with the county. It is, if you're thinking this is just some small-scale program, it is not. It rivals any municipal fireworks display in the county. It is a remarkable program, and you can get tickets. They keep the price of admission very low. I think they're $5. And I -- that's what -- that's, I guess, what is up on the screen right now. So the -- I urge you to go to that. It also serves another purpose, and that is that the incidence of homeowners doing fireworks displays in their backyards and lawns, driveways and streets goes down as a result of this because there is a place for people to go and experience this in a safe and controlled venue. So I encourage you to go. But before that happens, the same day, you can also be in far north Glendale and go to the Montreux Shopping Park from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. and attend their ninth annual invitational block party and classic car and hot rod show. More than 200 classic stock vehicles and hot rods that are on display there. It is an invitation-only event, and I think that the shopping park association there is the only group that does this in the local region. So you can't just come in, pay 35 bucks, and park your car. Your vehicle has to be looked at, examined, and you have to be invited into the program. So it really is the best of the best of museum vehicles and private collections, cars from Another Cut and the Peterson Automotive Museums. They are remarkable vehicles, millions and millions and millions of dollars' worth of vehicles out on the road. You can walk right up, not only visit the vehicles and look at them, but the exhibitors themselves that love this event so much because of the setting, that they are there present with their vehicles so you can talk to them as well. And that, of course, will be in combination with the Montreux Harvest Market, the rides, the games, not to mention 200 of the unique businesses and restaurants, cafes that are present in the shopping park, to go visit and spend your money, have lunch, and enjoy -- or breakfast or both, and enjoy the day. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond.
Just wanted to mention two events I attended. One that's ongoing, and I hope people will go and check out. That's at the Brand Library, and it's an art exhibit and sale of an artist named Robert Brown, who was a very prolific artist here in Glendale who died recently. And when he died, his niece donated all of his works, which are a couple thousand pieces, to the Friends of the Brand Library to sell off to raise money for the library. The art starts as low as $5, and I don't think there's a thing in there for more than $175. And those are original, one-of-a-kind paintings we're talking about on the lower end, seraph graphs, beautiful framed and unframed pieces of art. All the money, 100% of it, going to the library to support all the library services. And so you can help the library and get a great piece of art to hang on your wall or give as a gift. The exhibit's going to be up for, I believe, the next two weeks. I will be taking another shift as a salesperson there on Thursday from 2:00 to 5:00. So if you come between those hours, you can not only buy a piece of art, you can have a council member to hear all of your complaints up and close and personal for no extra charge. Maybe I should tack on a little bit of a surcharge for that. It was a wonderful exhibit. A lot of people came out. The art was flying out of there, but don't worry, there's plenty left. Secondly, I attended over the weekend along with our mayor the Valley Economic Alliance's annual award ceremony, and I'm very proud to announce that our own Glendale Community College Foundation was one of the awardees. It was wonderful to see elected officials from all over the region and business leaders coming out to show their appreciation for Glendale Community College and its foundation, which, of course, is a nonprofit, to raise money for the college. And what could be a better use of nonprofit dollars than supporting education and the jobs that it creates and the opportunities that it opens up for all of the people who attend GCC? So I just wanted to acknowledge them and congratulate them up here from the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is the Consent Calendar. In the following routine, it may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, move the Consent Calendar at 5:00.
For a second.
Second.
I have no cards. It's a thing of separate consideration. Let's take roll call, please.
Council members, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item would be Oral Communications.
This is the three-minute portion of Oral Communications, and they have several cards. We'll start with Hank Sheets, followed by Mark Sturdeman.
Mayor Najarian, council members, staff. My name's Hank Sheets. I'm a board member with the Parks and Open Space Foundation. Here again to announce our very successful fundraising event, Art from the Ashes. Last summer, the devastating station fire destroyed most of the 700-plus acres of the Duke Magian Wilderness Park. In a joint effort of the Art from Ashes and the Parks and Open Space Foundation to raise awareness of the damage done and to raise funds to support the efforts to restore the Duke Magian Wilderness Area to its previous state, 62 artists donated their time and created over 120 art pieces using salvaged materials gathered from the burned area. These fine works of art made from glass, metal, bark, tree branches, and ashes are now being displayed at the gallery located at 216 South Brand just across from the Americana. Over 900 people visited the gallery on the opening -- on the grand opening. And the weekend of June 19th, a steady flow of visitors continue to come and view this special exhibit. This is a wonderful, one-of-a-kind event, unique for our city, and something that you should not miss. Again, the address is 216 South Brand directly across from the Americana. This exhibit will be there until July 24th, and it's open Tuesday through Sunday, 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. There's some of the art pieces that have been -- that are on display. That's just a part of the crowd that showed up. The people just kept coming in. It was an amazing event. So I just want to remind everybody, it's something you don't want to miss. It'll only be there for about three or four weeks. Please take advantage and come down and see the exhibit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Sturdeman.
Mayor Najarian, members of council, my name is Mark Sturdeman. I'm a senior analyst with the Community Services and Parks Department, and I just wanted to take a moment to invite you and, of course, the folks who are watching at home to our Glendale-Narrows Riverwalk Community Open House that is going to take place tomorrow evening. That's Wednesday, June 30th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. The location of the meeting is the city's Environmental Management Center, which is at 780 Flower Street. That's near the Grayson Power Plant in the Grand Central Creative Campus area of the city. It's just southwest of San Fernando Road. And during the open house, we plan to bring the community up to date with a progress report on the master planning that we're doing on Phases 2 and 3 of the Riverwalk project. This involves the connection between Phase 1 and Phase 2, as well as potential bridge locations over the Verdugo Wash, and of course, potential bridge locations over the Los Angeles River itself, which would connect Riverwalk with the Los Angeles City Bike Path and beyond into Griffith Park. And I know there's been a lot of interest in the bridge locations, where they might be located, what they could look like, what they might cost, what story they should tell. So we're going to give the public a first look tomorrow night. We'll have an opportunity to visit the Riverwalk site itself, and most importantly, we'll get the public's feedback to see whether we're headed in the right direction. So once again, that's the Community Open House on the Riverwalk Project tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Environmental Management Center, 780 Flower Street. Come give us your thoughts about the Riverwalk project. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Siun Bartanyan, followed by the U.N. Global Debate Team.
Mayor Najarian, city council members, my name is Siun Bartanyan, and I am one of the youth leaders at ARC Family Center. I'm here along with Shorik Chilangarian and Ari Minasun. We're actually a part of ARC's Leadership Academy, and one of -- or at least not one, but one aspect of our training is to actually put together fundraisers, and that's why we're here today. We are here on behalf of ARC to let you know about our upcoming Summer Extravaganza, which is actually being held on Saturday, July 10th, and it's titled Pink Panthers Trail to Chevy Chase Canyon, held at the beautiful home of Mr. and Mrs. Warren Binsley. And we extend this invitation to all of you, and I actually do have invitations for you, if I may pass this way.
To the clerk.
And we'd greatly appreciate your attendance. If any of you have seen the original Peter Sellers Pink Panthers movie, you've seen that they are full of surprises and adventure and fun, then that's what the night is going to be all about. And of course, it's a fundraiser, so we're going to have lots of prizes and a lot of fun in store, so we'd appreciate your attendance there. Thank you.
Thank you. The U.N. Global Debate Team.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. We, the members of the U.N. Global Debates New Hope Academy Division, have come today to share the great news. We have done it. We have officially completed the year-long project as the number-one team internationally. None of this would have been possible with our leaders here today. Thank you so much for your support, your guidance, your understanding when listening to our intro five times in a row, and always having an open door to hear our presentations regardless of season or matter.
As the number-one team, we have been provided a scholarship to travel to the Netherlands to join in the international youth forum and compete with students from around the world. We are extremely excited, and we promise to leave a lasting impression as residents of the Glendale community and representative of America.
And we would like to give special thanks to our previous mayor, Frank Quintero, and councilman Laura Friedman for your unconditional support. Thank you so much, and we hope to see you again the following year. Thank you.
I just want to say I thought I earned a trip to the Netherlands, but I didn't hear the -- didn't hear the announcement.
That's what they'll be debating in the Netherlands, is whether you earned it.
No, congratulations. They've worked really, really hard, and so they deserve the honor, that's for sure. And they'll probably be number one when they get to the Netherlands, I'm sure.
They are incredible. If anybody -- whenever you have your debates in the area, you should definitely come and let the community know because it is really inspiring, and it was very interesting. Hearing all of the different issues that the U.N. was debating was really very enlightening. So thanks so much for coming. Congratulations. Terrific.
I have no other cards for Oral Communications. Let's move on. Mr. Kasakian.
Moving on to item seven on the agenda, the adoption of ordinances. At 7A is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of a real property to new singular wireless PCS LLC for wireless antenna at the entrance of freeway park site A adjacent to the sports complex. This was offered on June 22, 2010 by council member Weaver.
Yeah, I have no cards.
Mr. Mayor, move 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
No other questions? Let's take roll.
Council members, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Moving on to action items. At 8A is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding the Levy of Annual Assessment and Preparation of the Engineer's Report for Fiscal Year 2010-2011 for the North San Fernando Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. At 8A1 is a resolution initiating the Fiscal Year 2010-2011 Levy of Annual Assessment and ordering the preparation of an engineer's report. At 8A2 is a resolution preliminary approving the engineer's report for the Fiscal Year 2010-2011 Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments. And at 8A3 is a resolution declaring the city council's intention to levy and collect annual assessment for the Fiscal Year 2010-2011.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is your annual action to set the assessment districts for this landscape maintenance district. As noted in the resolution but not on the agenda, the last resolution in line sets this matter for a public hearing on July 13. Staff recommended adoption.
Are there any questions? Does anyone -- I have no cards. Would anyone like
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Elliott.
You'll have a full staff report during the public hearing on 13.
Okay. I'll recognize Mr. Weaver.
And I'll move 8A, 1, 2, and 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
At 9, on the agenda, under hearings, at 9A is Director of Community Planning and regarding rezoning of Lot 21, Block 5, or track 9328, APN 5660-011-034, lot adjacent to the 1912 Sussex Court, from SR Special Recreation to R1-R2, restricted residential floor area District 2. At 9A1 is a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration, PIF 2008-012. At 9A2 is a resolution approving general plan amendment, PGP 2010-002. At 9A3 is an ordinance for introduction amending Glendale zoning and approving zone change case number 2010-002. At 9A4 is a motion denying general plan amendment, PGP 2010-002, and zone change, PZON 2010-002.
Mr. --
To Mr. Haganian. Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a first action that the applicant is taking, which will be followed by a series of other hearings held by the Planning Division of the Community Planning Department, namely hearing officer hearings and DRB hearings. So this is the first step that will make the application process possible, and Brad Collins has prepared a slide presentation of the site that he will use to explain to you what the action is, and we'll be able to answer your questions.
As members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I'm Brad Collins, senior planner with the Community Planning Department. As mentioned, this is a zone change application, case number PZON 2010-002, and a general plan amendment, case number PGP 2010-002, as well as environmental information, mitigated neg-- dec, case number 2008-012. The applicant in this project is requesting that the city consider rezoning the property. See, it's this green portion here, from SR to R1-R, floor area District 2. The surrounding area on the street, and this is Sussex Street, which is accessed right off of Chevy Chase Canyon, is all zoned R1-R, floor area District 2. The current use of the property is, while labeled as a park, has never been used as such. It's a very steep lot. It's a steep lot. It's about 4,000 some odd square feet and located, as you can see, between two single-family zone lots. The applicant originally applied for a conditional use permit in 2008 to build a single-family residence on Lot 22, which is this lot right here. There's a large, it's a 37-inch oak tree that spans across the property. A tree permit was denied through the Public Works Department from the city arborist as well as engineering, which precluded the applicant from being able to access the property. What the applicant did at that point was to purchase the property in the middle, which is Lot 21, and propose to put a driveway up through the SR is Lot 21, and propose to put a driveway up through the SR zone and into the upper part of Lot 22, where he's proposing to build his house. However, the SR zone doesn't allow for driveways, much less access to a residential property. So, in this application that you have before you, the property owner is requesting to change this SR zone to an R1R to be consistent with the surrounding area along the block. I have some aerial photographs that show of the area. It includes the subject property here, which is this portion in yellow, the neighboring property, which is Lot 22, which is where the proposed house would be located. This is a different angle looking toward the east. This is Lot 22, and this is the neighboring property next door, in which the zone change application is being requested. The picture looking toward the rest, toward the property on the right side of it, this is the oak tree that you can see that the drip line spans across the lot. Another photo, as you're moving across, and then looking across the property toward the existing oak tree. This exhibit is a site plan. It shows the proposed driveway that comes up over the neighboring property, over the proposed lot, and on to Lot 22, which is addressed as 1912 Sussex. This version shows the drip line of the existing oak tree, as well as some of the other indigenous trees located on the SR zone. And one of the things that this driveway does, and was supported by our city arborist, or city forester, sorry, and the engineering department, is this driveway is more sensitive to the indigenous trees that are on the property. And concludes the presentation for that. Staff is recommending approval and has support from the planning commission, when it was heard before the planning commission, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
What I'm concerned about...
Mr. Quintero, hold on one second. Let me open the public hearing.
Yeah. Sorry. I drove to the cul-de-sac there. What I'm concerned about is the actual driveway leading up to the top of the hill and the sort of retaining walls that may have to be built, et cetera, et cetera. So, what can you tell me about that?
The applicant is also, depending on the results of the meeting tonight, is applying for a conditional use permit for the subject property on Lot 22, for the average current slope exceeding 50%, and for the lot width being less than 80 feet. In conjunction with that, the applicant's also asking for three variances, one of which is the driveway slope, the second is the retaining wall height, where portions of some of the retaining walls are over the allowed height requirement. And then the third thing that the applicant is requesting is to have the driveway located on a property that is not his own, which is the neighboring lot owned by Mr. Victor Mallon.
And so, by making this decision tonight, then we've opened up the process for him to apply for those variances and CUPs and so forth.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver.
I want to clarify. So, he has an easement, a recorded easement to go over the lot on the other side of the one he purchased?
Yes.
That's recorded?
And there's also a covenant that's being required from the city that's allowing the applicant to use this property to protect the indigenous trees that are out there. And also, there's a city sewer line that goes through the property that the applicant will allow the city access to.
So, he's already paid for another lot, paid for an easement probably, to be able to build a house.
On Lot 20, which is the neighboring lot, the property owner there has granted an easement to the subject property owner, and the subject property owner owns both Lot 21 and 22.
And this is all with no guarantee that he'll be successful. No matter what we do here today, he needs variances. There's no guarantee.
If this gets approved tonight, then he'll be able to go forward with his conditional use variance applications.
With no guarantee that he will get them.
Right. There's no guarantee.
Ms. Friedman.
For the public watching at home, can you just very briefly outline the planning commission's recommendations and their reasoning behind them?
The planning commission supported the application. They were happy that the applicant was working well with the city and the various different departments. The applicant has been in good contact with Engineering Department, Water and Power, Fire, as well as Planning. And the planning commission felt that this was a good project, and they supported it.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, the actual, how did they get an SR lot in the middle of R1R? What's that?
There's several little pocket zones throughout the city that I think were sold off, from what I understand. The owners, because they're substandard lots typically, and they were just little pieces that were sold off that people felt that they couldn't develop anything, and SR seemed to be the most logical zone to have them zoned as. That's my understanding.
If I may also add to the answer that Brad gave, from time to time, we work with the Community Services and Parks Department and identify certain lots that could be proposed as SR. One idea is that some of these are substandard. And on the other hand, we have always said that one way to develop on the hillside, the best way, the best option, is to assimilate, assemble lots together so that you can have better access. So, in this case, we're dealing from, stepping away from one policy to changes zoning to SR so that we can make sure that nobody is going to propose substandard development on it. On the other hand, we're seeing that an applicant is stepping forward to do what we encourage, to assemble lots so that they can get better development.
And the owner of, there's singular ownership with Lot 21 and Lot 22?
It's the same owner.
Same owner. Okay.
Cards?
I have one card. Mr. Nadeem Haider.
Mr. Mayor and council member, I am actually the owner of the lot, so I wanted to come and introduce myself and open myself for any questions that you may have.
Name for the record. Your name for the record.
My name is Nadeem Haider. I am CFO of one of the cable network that Disney owns. So, about two years ago, before my son was born, we wanted to make Glendale our home, because my wife has lived here for 16 years, and even today, if she wants to go grocery shopping, she comes to Glendale. So, the choice was fairly clear to me that this is where we want to make it. And when we found this land, from day one, I knew that the tree we wanted to preserve. And for the last almost two and a half years, I have worked with different departments, Forest Department, it was Theresa Proznec and Marishid, and I've changed my design at least twice to make sure that I don't disturb the tree. And eventually, we came to the conclusion after, you know, two design changes and a year and a half of conversation with literally every department within the city, that is physically not possible. And everyone that we have talked to, including the homeowners association, my neighbors, they all recommended that, why don't you create the driveway through this park, which is actually called the Bridle Park, which no one has used and is a little bit of a fire hazard. So, that's when I got the idea. Actually, someone from, Mike Whittaker, from Steve Zern's office, called me after my application for cutting the tree was denied, saying that, let me help you to figure out if there is a way that we can create the driveway through this Bridle Park area. And after a year and a half, with help from Chris Sensoni, Mark Mathias, they said that the only way that you can do this is if you find and own this land, underlying rights. So, it was almost a miracle that I found the heir of that land. They didn't even know that they owned that property. So, I had to actually convince them, that, no, you are the owner, and you can sell it to me. So, eventually, I bought the property, and now I'm going through another phase, which I recently found out that it's a different zone, and you have to change the zone. So, here I am, making that request to you, that this is probably the most ecological way to develop that property. And the good thing about the slope of the park is that it has the natural grade already, so I don't have to do much grading. And basically, you follow the natural grade, and it takes you to the back of my lot. And the way the house is going to be, that literally with the trees, surrounding trees, you won't even see the house from the outside. Hence, the homeowner association is, they call it, they are not supporting, but they are not opposed to the idea of it. At least, that's how they phrase it. And literally, everyone who has gone to the property has kind of agreed with the solution. So, anyway, I just want to give you the context. I'm here if you want to ask me any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess that's about as good an endorsement you're going to get from the Chevy Chase homeowners association.
I have...
A non-opposing position.
Right.
You don't have to answer that. You're doing fine.
Thank you.
I'm happy that you took the tree into consideration and didn't do a midnight chop-down, which unfortunately, we see throughout the city occasionally. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Quintero.
Question for Mr. Hagan. Is there another location where a house could be sited? Does it have to go on the top of the hill? What's...
Actually, we haven't started developing the site planning concepts yet, but definitely, that would be some of the options that we'll be looking at with the DRB at the time that the applicant applies for design review.
Ms. Friedman.
The only thing I'm going to suggest to the applicant as you move forward in the process, assuming that you get the permission tonight, that you go to the DRB at the preliminary stage, as opposed to at the final stage, because the site planning is going to be the tricky part of your project. And you don't want to go through the trouble of doing a full set of plans and then have the DRB say, can you just rotate the house 25 degrees? So, if you go for preliminary, I think financially, it's neutral, or it's close to it, but you get, you'll get a lot more kind of buy-in early on, and it'll make your DRB process a lot smoother as you go forward.
Thank you for the recommendation.
Also, the applicant may apply for preliminary comments from staff in written form, that staff can actually give them written guidance as how to prepare the application so that they would get a more favorable review from staff in presenting it to DRB.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Close the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing.
I'd just like to say, you've done everything right so far. As Ms. Freeman says, go over there and get the help from the staff now, rather than later, save you going back and forth a couple times. With that, I'd like to move 1 and 2. 8, 9A, 1 and 2.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, in addition to the siding of the property, I think it's also important to keep in mind that you are in Chevy Chase Canyon, and when you look at the surrounding properties, there's an awful lot of sort of ranch, split level, et cetera, type of architecture. So, I sure hope that whatever you pick sort of blends in and kind of, you know, works with the rest of the neighborhoods, because quite frankly, that's one of the issues that we've had for many, many years in this city, when a neighborhood is a particular style or a preponderance of a particular style, and all of a sudden, a property owner wants to build a home that totally does not fit in. So, I hope you don't head down that track, because I think you're going to meet an awful lot of opposition, and those Chevy Chase homeowner association members are going to be the first ones that are going to be here and filing to go against your design. So, I really hope you keep that in mind.
Roll call.
I was just going to say that I think the term is compatibility, to keep a sense of compatibility, not conformity.
Right.
Compatibility.
Okay, let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance of 9A3.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, what is next?
Now, return to the five-minute portion of oral communications, where discussion is limited. The item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker has a lot of five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Isabel Meyer, followed by Bob Getz.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, city council members and city staff. My name is Isabel Meyer. I have lived in Glen Oaks Canyon for the past 36 years, and for the last 20 years, I have organized and maintained a disaster preparedness program. I'm coming to you today because I'm very concerned about a brush clearance issue. Over the last four weeks, I have spent quite a bit of time contacting various city agencies trying to get an answer on how to go about clearing the brush along the roadside, starting at the 2,700 block of East Glen Oaks, all the way to the recreational area, namely the golf course. A few days ago, I took some pictures so that you have some idea of what my concerns are, and I would just like to pass these along. I'm not sure what's the right way of doing this, so you see why I am concerned about this. The city has traditionally, every year or so, cleared the brush along the hillside to about five feet from the curb, so that if people throw a burning cigarette butt out of their car, which many of them do unfortunately, because I think a lot of the people who go up to the golf course, to the baseball field, are not fully aware of how dangerous it is, you know, to start a small fire, and then it just completely gets out of control in no time. So, this five-foot stretch from the curb to the hillside is essential in minimizing the danger of a fire. As you probably know, we had a fire on August 4th of last year. Fortunately, on that particular day, there was no wind, and the fire department didn't have any other fires to contend with at the time, so they were very effective in moving all their resources in and putting it out with a minimum of fuss. But it was enough to really shake the population of Glen Oaks Canyon. We have 800 homes, approximately 2,500 people living in the canyon. You probably know that there's only one exit. Glen Oaks Boulevard is the only way out of that canyon, and I'm sure you can imagine how tricky it will be to try and get 2,500 people out of a canyon where there's only a one-lane road leading out. And I think it's because of this that I implore you to do whatever you can to make sure that this brush is cleared as soon as possible. It's getting dryer by the day. My main concern, thank you, are 40 pine, approximately 40 pine trees that have died. Somebody suggested that they must have fallen victim to the bark beetle disease. I don't know. I'm not an arborist. I don't know what the cause is. But there are many, many dead trees up there that were initially planted on the slope right below the baseball field, and they looked really nice when they were alive, but now they are a major hazard. What I'm afraid of is that we might have a situation like we did a couple of years ago in Lake Arrowhead, where these dead trees just go poof when there's a fire around. And in our canyon, that will be a major hazard. So, I have spoken to Parks and Rec, Public Works, Neighborhood Services, the Glendale Fire Department, and I have a call in to the L.A. County Fire Department, because it occurred to me that maybe one way of approaching this is to have some of the convict crews that they use in brush fires to clear brush and create fire breaks to come in and do a preventative clearing of that area. I'm not expert. I don't know if this is something that could be considered, but I will personally not rest until our canyon is as safe as it can be going into this dangerous time of year. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
No, thank you, but we'll raise that at the end of the...
I'm sorry?
We'll raise that issue and get some answers at the end of oral communications.
Thank you.
Mr. Getz, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of council, staff. I'm Bob Getz, a resident of northwest Glendale. Before I get into the subject that brings me here this evening, I would like to add my name to what is no doubt going to be a very lengthy list of people congratulating not only the fire... congratulating not only the Firefighters Association here in Glendale, but also the city negotiation team that was very instrumental in bringing this very successful solution. I can only encourage you to continue the hard and very good work, because there are, I understand, some additional hurdles to climb over between now and the time that some of these real questions have to be resolved. So good luck to you, but keep up the kind of work that you obviously have been doing with the associations to achieve those kinds of results. Now, with respect to why I'm here, I do appreciate this opportunity to finish a statement that I started earlier today during a joint meeting of the city council and the Water Power Commission on a very interesting and lengthy subject. I would like to put into some context for those who are viewing this at home, some idea of what I'm talking about, so they have an understanding of why I'm concerned about what I'm bringing forth. Earlier today, the officials from Glendale Water and Power met with you and the commission to explain the reasons why they believe they need another water rate increase, this time to meet a financial imbalance in the utility brought about by water conservation. As they explained to us, water conservation has resulted in lower revenues, and that has caused a financial problem in the utility. And it's going to be corrected presumably by this 3.8% increase proposal. The question I was going to ask when my time ran out this morning, or this afternoon, actually, was this. Why wasn't this subject of a rate increase brought to you last week, when we were talking about a finalization of a budget, and also your decision, or you made a decision, to transfer $4.2 million from the water surplus fund in the utility over to the city's general fund? Now, according to the financial records, there was in fact a surplus. Utility generated a surplus. I know that those transfers that, that I'm talking about are required by the city charter. We've gone over that numerous times. But that charter also authorizes city council to reduce or to waive entirely that transfer if that action is necessary to preserve the financial health and strength of the utility. Now, here we've got a utility coming to, to you to increase the rates 3.8% to erase an imbalance, a financial imbalance in their books. Why didn't they retain more of that surplus, that water surplus fund, for their use and reducing that deficit? And subsequently, they would make then a smaller transfer to the general fund. Now, those of us in the public think that that's maybe the way the system ought to work. And yet, we see transfers being made, and then you have to come back and then go to the ratepayers for an increase in water rates to balance the books. This is the thing that some of us in the general public are uncomfortable with. It is not the way we would run our household. And we look to you to, to maybe start to review the way this is all done. This is an excellent example of what I think the writers of the charter had in mind, when they put that provision in the charter, authorizing you to waive or to reduce those transfers to meet the needs of the utility's budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, your honor, mayors of council, city staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I am a 50-year resident of Adams Hill and of Glendale. I've always said, Glendale's a wonderful place to live. We have a few problems, and we work them out pretty well. Sometimes, we don't. One of the things, the reason I'm here is to remind people that next week, we will celebrate July 4th, at least on Sunday. And many of our freedoms is freedom of speech. And also, we feel that we have freedom of our homes to do with as we want. A lot of people forget that there are city laws and state laws governing our use of our homes and in accordance with the rest of the population, so that we can have a quality of life and a neighbor, neighborhood, a sense of neighborhood and friendship and so forth. Now, my area where I live happens to be R1R, one of the little pockets. And you have to remember, the area is 40% of the population of Glendale, which equals out to about 60,000 people, is in my area, south of Colorado, that little pocket, that little V that goes down there. Now, I'm, the reason I'm bringing this up, over and over, on my street and in my area, there are homes in there that are being converted, not just to duplexes, but I happen to have one neighbor that she is renting to two other people. That makes it a triplex. Now, you're saying, well, yeah, well, she's making money on her home, and they, we're having to put up with the extra parking, the people parking, and actually harassing people like me, who have, live in one person in a home, because they want, you know, the parking spot in front of my house. Now, this is not right. These people have six cars, two of them illegally, because they have illegal rentals. And it's going on all the time, all over the city. People, I have other people that have talked to me about it. They've reported it, and nothing is ever done. Oh, yes, something is going to be taken care of. Yes, it is. This is wrong. If I wanted to live in a fourplex, a triplex, I could live in my own on Luigi Street. I bought my home so that I would have a single-family home and be able to enjoy my neighborhood, not have cars bumper-to-bumper, pushing and shoving each other for a parking space. Because these homes up on that hill, they don't, some of them only have one-car garages. Some of them have two that were made for small cars. And most of them, like my house, our driveways are not even legal to put a normal, like my van, in, will hang over the sidewalk. And my grandson got a ticket. He parked my car, parked the car, and he got a ticket. There was nowhere else to park for blocks and blocks. So now, this is not fair. I just don't think it's fair at all. And people that take advantage of the fact that they think they can do whatever they want with their property and their whatever, they don't have to obey any laws. You say, well, that's against the law. Well, what law? I didn't make that law. That's for you. I don't have to obey that law. I've had that said to me many times. And I'm sorry for that, because we all should be enjoying our freedoms in America and appreciate what we have. I mean, it's a wonderful place to be a citizen of the world, of, of America. In the world, we're considered one of the places to come and live. And people want to get here. They're on long waiting list to get in. So why would we abuse the freedoms that we're given by taking advantage of, doing illegal things, is what I'm saying, breaking the law? And then, I mean, over and over, it's this thing like the Moonlight Cafe, or restaurant, or whatever you call it. And again, I bring up the fact that riles me to death. Where is Conrad's, or Damon's, or Billy's? Where do they have a raised stage and a dance floor? And yet, they were granted a CUP to be a restaurant. Now, come on, you know, this is, this is silly. It's been, we've gone through that before. And it keeps going on. Again, it's this whole idea that, well, we don't have to obey the rules or the laws. They're to be made, they're there to be bent or broken or whatever. And that is not the way to live, to be neighborly and to be a good citizen if you keep on doing this. So, and I do hope everybody will have a good Fourth of July and appreciate being an American and try to be a good American. And think of your neighbors as well as your family, as you say. You know, they are your, you are your brother's keeper. And that means in terms of trying to be a good neighbor and take care of our lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Mr. Starburg, two issues in particular, the brush clearance and the, I guess, the code enforcement issue regarding rentals and all that.
Mm-hmm. Well, I don't, I don't know what Ms. Meyer, what response she's received in the various departments she's called. Steve, are you familiar with--
I'm not familiar, but we'll--
We'll have all the staff in for staff meeting tomorrow morning, and we'll--
Yeah.
Put our hands together and--
We'll look at this, I'll look at the brush, roadside brush and the trees.
And indeed, we have some trees. Sounds like it may be parks trees, so they may be probably works trees, but we'll check out the trees as well.
Well, they were put in when Glen Oaks was extended--
I'm sure they were. Sure they were. As to the rentals, Mr. Howard, can you let some, shed some light on that?
We can talk to Mr. Engel to see if these single-family homes are being, I'll use the term unlawfully converted to a boarding house, for example, or other multi-rental, multi-unit rentals. We'll check with Mr. Engel and look at doing some inspections up there and see what information--
Which generally wouldn't, would not be permitted--
Boarding house is not permitted in our one--
Single-family zone.
Generally speaking, a boarding house is not--
We'll just, we'll just need, we'll just need address from Margaret, and we'll follow up.
I'm sure you can get that information.
Ms. Friedman.
Sure. I just wanted to thank Mr. Getz for spending the day with us. It's nice to have you here. And I think all of us enjoy a good discussion, and you've provided that and some good thoughts. I did want to just give a little quick response. Something that didn't come out today during the meeting, and I'm sorry it didn't, it's information I wasn't quite sure about and was confirmed afterwards by GWP. Yes, we, part of this proposed rate increase is because of conservation and because people are using less water. But the converse is not true. And so if we hadn't conserved, we'd actually be having to raise the rates more and not less. And the reason is because MWD does have a tiered rate system, and they have penalties. And if we hadn't have, if the public hadn't come forward and conserved to the extent they did, which was wonderful, we would have actually been in penalty and had to pay a much higher rate to buy the water from the Metropolitan Water District. So I want to make that clear. I don't want people to think that because they've done a good job conserving, that they're being punished for it. Actually, it's the opposite. If we hadn't have conserved, our rates would spike much more. And the number that was thrown out today was, was in the double-digit millions. So it's, I don't remember the exact number--
Eleven million.
$11 million. We would have had to pay in a year in penalties. So let's all keep that in mind as we think about conservation. And in terms of the transfers, you know, that's an interesting question of whether this was what was anticipated. Now, my guess is, without having, knowing the code that intimately, or knowing the charter as intimately as I should, my guess is that the idea was that if there was a crisis in the utility, that for a year or two, they would suspend the transfer. I would think that something like this, where water rates are going, going to continue to increase because the water supply is being constrained and the regulatory environment continues, that this is an ongoing problem, not something you're going to deal with in a year or two. And that the discussion isn't so much whether it's this moment where the transfer should be suspended, but whether we should suspend it forever. Because I think that's what we would have to do if we were going to say that we didn't want to raise rates as the cost of the water increased. So I don't want to get into the whole water discussion again, but it's very interesting, and I'm learning about it, and it's, you know, we'll continue to find out more as we go on. But I just wanted to, you spent the day with us, so I wanted to at least give you a little bit of that response.
Ms. Draymond.
Well, Mr. Getz, I'm glad you are here, because while we're all learning about that aspect of it, let me also put that notion that was put forward to Councilmember Friedman in perspective as well, because it's not exactly so. Yes, there's a threshold that MWD imposed, above which the penalties, or below which the penalties would have caused the rates, the rates to be increased even more. But that was not the 18% level that Glendale residents responded to. We were looking for 10%. We ended up with 18%. So it is not necessarily so that those rates would have necessarily been more had they only been, had the, had the conservation factor only have been 10%. So that's not so either. And that's one of the things that irritates me as a council member sitting up here, is I cannot be clear at all times what kind of manipulation of language and data is going on here. But in any case, the argument is, regardless of that, the argument is that at no time was the public told, go out, be good, compliant citizens, help with conservation. And whether it's a large increase or a small increase, an increase because your, your conservation efforts fall below the 10% threshold or far exceeded, you're going to get stuck with an increase bill. That part was left out.
Mr. Quintaro, Mr. Weaver.
I just think it rained a heck of a lot this year, and we turned off our sprinklers. So I hope we have continued success with Mother Nature for years to come.
There's no other--
Oh, I have, yes. I would like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Gibbs, Geddon, Locker, Turner's and Senate LLP, Barbara Gedbois, to assist the city attorney in the evaluation of bid related to, related issues for community services and Parks Department's Griffith Manor construction and renovation project. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. The motion adjourned.
We adjourn.